Pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance.
To the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
John.
Well, Jerry and Sam, we're gonna have to come up and take the lobby and explain to us what your request is right here?
Yep.
What your request is.
First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for calling this meeting in the city. We appreciate it. I'd like to start with a little explanation of how this fire warden position came about. For those of you that aren't new commissioners, nineteen eighty-eight, when we had the Yellowstone Forest fires, it became apparent to our fire district.
Hey Jerry, just hold on one second. Hey Lloyd, do we need to have him pull the mic? Can you pull the mic closer to you maybe?
A little closer would would be helpful. I'm 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 turning my good ear to the thing. I can hear most of it. Jerry, if you don't, if you're in too much trouble.
Is this better, Lloyd?
That's good, that's good, yeah.
Okay. So nineteen eighty-eight, with the Yellowstone fires, it became apparent to our fire district that we were one of the few counties in the state that was not a part of the emergency fire suppression account. So in nineteen eighty-nine, when Don Young and Russ Wiki started, our board passed them with trying to figure out how we could become a member of that. At that time, state forestry would not pay fire districts. They only paid counties. So that's when the joint Park County Fire Joint Powers Board was created. That's a board member from each of the four fire districts on this board and a fifth position, which they elect as the fire warden. Russ Wiki was in that position until two thousand nineteen, when he retired, and they elected me to that position. The emergency fire suppression account allows fire districts to receive money from the state to help pay for fire suppression costs that are incurred for large fire events. There's paperwork involved, and the county at that time didn't feel they wanted to be into fire suppression activities because they were commissioners, not firemen. So that's how we got to where we are today with county fire warden. The reason for today's meeting is because of the dry, hot conditions that we are currently in. We felt that it's necessary to give you guys the information you need to make a judgment on a fire ban resolution. Currently, Shoshone Forest, BLM, and Big Horn Forest are all under stage one fire restrictions. This is at least a month prior to any other time that they have gone into restrictions due to the conditions that we're in right now. The last time that you guys put a restriction on was August seventeenth, two thousand sixteen. Remember that's year we had the Whitfire, Hydro Peak Fire, and we had a huge fire out there on two A B that year also. That year, due to the wildland fires, we did lose two homes, one in Whitfire and one on two A B. Our resources, when conditions are this way, get limited throughout the county. And we have so many trucks, so many men that can respond to fire calls. There's been years on the Fourth of July where we've actually had a list of fires waiting for a truck to clear to go to the next fire. I have talked with all of the chiefs in the district, and they are all in support of this resolution. At this time, there are nine other counties that are in restrictions, Sheridan, Campbell, Kirk, Western, Fremont, Detrona, Converse, Niagara, and Platte. As a conference call that we had yesterday, Teton, Hot Springs, and Johnsons are planning on going into restrictions this week. I know this timing is not good for this, but giving our current conditions, I feel that this is the best way to save properties in Park County from any wildland fire. Any spark at any time with our conditions, a wildfire will go quick. We have, in the resolution, allowed for the public fireworks this way to happen across the river in the pit. BLM and ourselves will have engines there. And I I feel it is best for this county to protect the properties if we enforce this resolution. And if you have any questions, we will take them.
Any questions, Lloyd? No questions. Not really a public meeting, but I got a lot of public here, so a few publics. If anyone wants to speak up, let's hear it.
We stand up? What do we do?
You can stand up, and you can state your name for the record.
All right, Tony Martin Oil. Been a park county resident for sixty-eight years. Ain't that scary?
That's just since you're sixty-eight.
Yeah, okay. So it's what I would like to put in my input on this. I understand safety. I was on the fire department for many, many, many years. You know, voted everybody that's on the fire department. I've said yes to everybody that's voted no. I'm very proud, very connected to the fire department. I think that all examples should be on that sheet that I just read. There's exemptions. So as you know, to my son Josh, we're celebrating his wedding. It was supposed to be done last year, but we couldn't do it because of the COVID. So we ended up buying a bunch of fireworks, but we did the preparation to do this. You've been out to this place, I'm sure, haven't you? Out in the middle of his hayfield, there's a road that crosses. That's where we're gonna set the fireworks off. His hayfields have been chopped down. As of yesterday, everything is down, everything is baled, everything stacked. We're four or five hundred yards away from anything with open fields. I know somebody that happens to own two fire trucks that's related to the kid, which is me. So we are gonna man that. If there was an exemption, the county commissioners can make an exemption. What we would like to do is have Jerry, invite Jerry, Sam, John, if they want to come out, inspect the land to see if we could have this firework show for the celebration of this country, great country, and the celebration of those two doing their wedding vows. So we would like to invite them out to see if it's safe to do it. If it's not safe, then we won't do it. If it's safe, we would like the exemption to do it.
Well, I guess I have to, Jerry, the way I read this, we can exempt even after the resolution is in effect. Correct?
Yeah, anytime that you guys feel you wanted to make an exemption.
Yeah.
That's a can of worms, and I'd be careful.
No, I I understand.
I'm sorry, yeah, for Tony, but we're not willing to support any exemptions at this time under these conditions.
Yeah, Tony Schimme, here in Park County. I guess the question I have is how are we gonna police this in such a short notice? I mean, guys are gonna be out there, they're gonna start tonight, they're gonna be all the way through the weekend. How do you plan on policing this? I mean, how do you get this out to the public in such short notice? Or, because it's gonna go off. I mean, it's gonna happen, no matter what. So I guess what is your concern? If a fire starts, that they're responsible, which they are anyway? I mean, if we go back to two thousand eleven, it was drier in two thousand eleven, and you put the moratorium on on the Fifth of July. So I guess that's a question. The policing action, if this had been a week ago, John Q Public would know about it. But it looks like today that ain't gonna happen. It's gonna be tough for all law enforcement all the way around. That's my concern.
I certainly don't wanna speak for law enforcement. I realize the timing's unfortunate, but in our opinion, we're gonna be asking people to do the right thing, and we're hoping that the majority of people will and put the fireworks away this year, and hopefully bring back that mixture. As far as, there's always gonna be people that aren't gonna abide by this law. I mean, we can't do anything to control that, but that puts the onus back on them. If we can get the message out that there's a fire restrictions in place, fireworks are illegal this year, and they choose to do it anyway, they're breaking the law just like any other time, that'll be up to law enforcement to be able to address those issues. But it takes the onus off of you.
One more question. So with this fire restriction, so all the guys that are in the backcountry camp and over the weekend, guys left already? So are they in violation then also?
Tony, this is, this is, anything in the backcountry is already taken care of by the Forest Service.
Okay.
So we don't have any jurisdiction over the Forest Service or any jurisdiction over the, over the cities. It's all, all the backcountry is already going, is already in the right now.
Right, well, yeah, I, but I didn't know if they had authority over that to stop with the fire restriction. None at all. Okay, no, thank you.
And I ask.
I have talked to the chiefs of police in Cooley and Powell, and those cities already have firework restrictions in them, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I comment as a citizen?
You're the good public, aren't you?
Okay. Last year, it's totally devastating, but last year, my son had to evacuate his home outside of Laurel, and all of this, he had to get his horses out. It's devastating. If people knew how fast and how quickly fire can move and the fear that it causes, let's all just wait and do our fireworks on December fourth. Nobody's gonna be, I, I, that's just my feeling. Once you actually go through something like this, and it really affects you as a family and as a person, I would hate to see one firework spark the wrong thing and put someone's home and livelihood in jeopardy. And we went through that last summer, and it was very devastating, very devastating. So I'm sorry to get real emotional here, but that's how devastating it was. So I just wanted to make that comment on a personal level.
I haven't been on the fire department as long as Tony, but I can say that as long as I've been around, anybody that looked out the window last week and saw the smoke coming off of this and saw the kind of fire behavior that we're seeing, that's typically something that we see in mid to late August and September. I've never seen these kind of fire conditions and this active screen fire behavior in June as long as I've been around it. And I think that's an indicator of where we're at this summer and what other nature's done to us, and we can't control that. All we can do is just try to protect the public as best we can.
I'll agree with Sam on that. It is devastating. We've been on some major fires in our time on the fire department, but there is a way to take precautions also. And we have taken those precautions. We have, we didn't know this was coming, but we took these precautions ahead of time. I mean, like I said, if these guys would like to come out and inspect the land, if they say, give me a thumbs up, great. If they give me a thumbs down, we won't have it. But I don't think that there's enough fuel out there. You're talking about a wildfire that's up in the mountains. You're talking about other people that don't control their property, that let the weeds grow, whatever. You've been out there, that's a well-maintained ranch. And right now, with the hay being down and everything being green and everything being irrigated, we're flooding those fields on, on the morning of the third. Everything that's around there, we're flooding them. That's our scheduled deal. So if you gives us a thumbs up, great. If it gives us the thumbs down, we won't have it.
That's a fair proposal. So you two guys, you have anything you'd like to add to the discussion?
Well, Mr. Speaker, but I, I got something.
Say your name for the record.
Kate Richmond. One thing, I think that the whole county's been through a hard time in the last year, and there's been a lot of things, whether you agree, disagree, or indifferent. I think trying to ban the fireworks for the Fourth of July because we're afraid of something that could happen, I think is something that maybe we need to pass up on for the county. We need to be able to get to some kind of normalcy again and not have something that could happen, and we're gonna just make sure that people don't get to do their normal stuff because something could happen. The fire that just happened in Red Lodge, we know why that started. That wasn't mother nature. That's somebody starting a fire on purpose, as far as we know at this moment. Somebody's in custody for that. So I think that we need to be able to get back to normal. We can't have fireworks on BLM, we can't have fireworks in the mountains. That's always been that way. So the only place you can do it is on your own private property. So we're, we're talking about letting people do something on their own private property is what we're talking about.
So that the potential risk, does have potential risk.
It has potential risk every year. It always does. And when you light a fire, you resume, you assume responsibility. That happens every year, anytime you light a fire. How many fires do we have that farmers light fields and the goods out of control? It happens every year. We don't ban fires for, for not being able to burn your weeds. We have out of control fires every single year, and we don't ban burning ditches every single year. We have fires that are out of control. When spring comes, fire departments are busy all the time because fire, because farmers light a fire and they walk away from it, and it gets out of control every year. So the potential for danger, we have it every single year. And I think that we're starting to get into a predicament where we forget that last year, this is, this is the worst it's ever been, this is the worst. We say that every year. This is the worst it's ever been. It's not the worst it's ever been. This has happened before. I remember Fourth of July's where wheat and barley are yellow. They're, they're turning. They're not turning this year. It's not the worst it's ever been. We, and we just need to get back to normal. So I think that's what I have to say.
I have, I have something too, and I'd like to add to that. First of all, I, I do think the county does a great job. Oh, sorry, Cole Richmond. I'm Kate's brother. We own a business together. We were both former law enforcement, but I do think the county does a good job with enforcing what already is in place, kind of going along with what he was saying. You already can't set off fireworks on public lands and in the mountains. And whenever we do fireworks, this year our business has invested a considerable amount of money in fireworks for the celebration of Fourth of July. So if they ban fireworks, we're out of all the money we invested for our business for the get together. But we have our celebration planned on private property. We, same place we do it every year. I know several other people where they plan on setting off fireworks. It's always a good spot, it has to be private property. It's always, sometimes it's out between Garland and Byron. There's nothing out there that you can really catch on fire. But I know several people too, friends and family, who sell fireworks and also make a living off of, they, they count on it every year, that opportunity to sell fireworks without getting shut down. So putting a firework ban out actually does hurt those businesses and the people that took off time from their regular jobs to go sell fireworks and have fun and let other people have fun celebrating the Fourth of July. And I think this is an important year to celebrate the Fourth of July without putting a ban on us gathering as families to celebrate what happened in seventeen seventy-six. So, but once again, I do think the county does a great job enforcing laws and rules that are already there. I don't think we need to add anymore. I think we just need to be responsible like every year. Thank you.
Anybody else? Lloyd, you got anything?
Not at this time.
Mr. Chairman. First, Jerry, Lloyd doesn't have a comment. That's sort of strange. Anyway. See, Johnny Kravos doesn't have a comment. That's sort of strange. You know, that's sort of a strange environment we're in. I, I, talking to the sheriff, I said, well, how do you enforce something like that? He goes, well, we don't. I think we're talking after the fact. Looking at misdemeanor one, I suppose, that you can charge somebody that that wouldn't allow. Our sheriff's department actually wrote a ticket that they violated a fire ban that was in the county. So this will be after the fact, as far as us putting a ban on. I can tell you, every year in Powell, our fire department, part of the Fourth of July celebration is to watch all the fire trucks head up to the bench, because people go out there, light up their fireworks, and they do it every year. There's always a fire out there. That's part of, you know, when our Fourth of July celebration has become. And talking to already some people who have private residents, they live out of the county, respecting their own freedoms, saying that's why they live out the county, so they don't have to deal with municipality laws and all that. A lot of them are saying, yeah, we're still probably gonna be lighting up fireworks. Still gonna happen. They're just taking a chance that, you know, that there won't be a fire and taking a chance that they won't be cited. But, you know, I was leaning, you know, when you think about the North Fork and what would happen, a fire, that would be devastating for us here in Park County. But, you know, Forest Service is taking care of that, BLM taking care of that with their fire bans up there. So as far as, you know, people being responsible for fireworks, they know that we're sort of in a drawn condition right now and haven't been cleared as an emergency. But people, I think, hopefully will bring up some common sense for, with their fireworks and with their fires and their backyard barbecue and all that. So, you know, I'm, I'm leaning against it, you know, the park county fire ban at this point, just because I think it's gonna happen. I think fireworks are gonna be going off. And I think that hopefully people who live in this area, in Park County and on the lands around here, will feature some common sense, like they did last year. It was dry last year, the year before that. You know, I know it keeps getting worse, but, you know, I saw the fire trucks going out yesterday, having a field outside of Powell. So it's, they know they're gonna be busy on the Fourth of July, our fire departments. And hopefully, it doesn't get too far out of control. Yes, sir. You know, nor, normally this should be a relatively easy decision. Remember the last one we did, you know, it was a slam problem. I lived in Park County since nineteen seventy-two, and these are the driest conditions I have ever seen in my life. So there's no question in my mind that we need a fire ban. But the big question I have, as Mr. Semley pointed out, with the timeline we're looking at, people are gonna start celebrating day after tomorrow. There's no question about that through the weekend, through the fourth. And I don't think a fire ban's gonna stop the fireworks. I really don't. People, a lot of people won't get the word, and some people will say, I'm gonna do it anyway. I was locked down last year. I didn't get an opportunity to celebrate. If I got, I'm gonna do it. You know, I doubt I'll go to jail, but if I gotta write a hundred dollar check, I will. And so with, with that being said, I think there is a very necessary need, it's a critical stage, that we need to have a fire ban. So I'm gonna make a motion that we put the fire ban into effect on July fifth.
The resolution as written?
But, but it goes into effect on July fifth.
Okay. Second?
Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved and seconded for further discussion. Did you get that, Lloyd?
No.
The, the, the fire ban would go into effect on July fifth.
Chairman?
Fifth?
July fifth, yeah.
That's the motion on the table.
Is there a second? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say.
It was moved by Commissioner Childen and seconded by Commissioner Mangle to implement fire ban as written on July fifth.
Okay, you're open, are you asking for discussion yet? May I?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As most, some of you know, I was a fireman on Powell Fire Department for seventeen years. I have that most respect for Jerry Parker, and, you know, I, I would, I would entertain many exemptions if they were policed like Tony's and, and it's, and checked to make sure they were safe. I personally, on the motion on the floor for the July fifth, I think that I, I would, I don't, I would rather go starting tomorrow. I kinda started this after some concerned emails from the constituents in, within the county and being, living in Clark as well as, but I look around the county as well. I mean, yes, public lands are dry, but so are private lands. Drain ditches are beyond dry than what they have, are in the normal. I, I see an extreme hazard. I know enforcement is not going to be that easy, but if we can curb some of it through the fourth with the, with the fire ban, I think it could say, could possibly save quite a bit of property and stuff and possibly lives. So I'm, I'm, I guess with the motion on the floor, I am not in favor of waiting until the fifth. I just, I think we need to adhere to the advice of Jerry Parker, our fire warden, and, as well as visiting with other fire departments. I've talked with, there's a big concern with the Clark Fire Department. They all know about the Robinson Draw Fire that took off. Yes, it was manmade, but because of the dryness, it, it jumped from forty acres to thirty thousand in, in two days. Now, we can sit here and argue as to why and how. The only reason that is outright today is because the, the wind blew back on itself. I, I don't wanna see that happen anywhere else in the county as we go forward. So if we can save from one wildland fire or property fire, I think we need to enforce it starting tomorrow. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, the only other final comment I would have, and your, your points are very, can you hear me? Your, your points are very well taken, and I totally understand where you're coming from, but I think as Mr. Semley pointed out, because of the short timeline here, and as Scott Stewart pointed out, they're not gonna enforce it anyway, it's gonna be after the fact, and the people aren't gonna know about it. You know, if this was two weeks ago, I'd vote for this in the heartbeat. I really would. So that's, that's right.
Jay? Opposed or favored?
Hi.
Opposed?
He didn't say.
Did he, I or?
He, he, and you vote opposed?
Opposed.
Yeah.
I vote opposed, mainly because of the, the dates, not the fire restriction.
Thanks, guys.
Because as, as they say, it's only at the top.
It's only at the top. You guys would not, you're not gonna entertain any exemption.
I don't think we should. At this time, given the conditions that we have, we didn't take this lightly coming to you to do this. We have not had the fire bans in two thousand sixteen. The conditions are set that we felt it was necessary to bring this to you in hopes that we do not lose somebody's home through the fireworks. You all know that if you shoot it up in the air, you don't know where it's gonna come down. And the condition that we have, any spark could possibly start a wildland fire.
Plus, do you have the staff? If you get eighty people requesting exemptions, do you have the staff to go out there and give them all taken care of before the fourth?
Absolutely not. I wouldn't, that's why I said, I wouldn't open up that can of ones. And I'm not saying that Tony hasn't made necessary precautions, but that's exactly the point. We, as soon as we allow one exception, we're gonna get plugged with them. And I just don't think we're in a position to be able to, to do that, you know? And you talk about the resources available. That's my other big concern. It's a year like this, where it's so dry, any one of those fireworks can start a grass fire, and we get resources, spread it out thin, and then we get a fire that's headed towards a structure, and God forbid we get a structure going. We don't have the manpower to be able to fight all these grass fires, plus fight a structured fire in those kind of conditions. And just, I think you guys need to consider, imagine calling the fire department because you have a fire threat in your house and nobody's coming. It, it sounds dramatic.
I'm gonna vote against, I'm gonna vote against the motion. So that leaves nothing happening.
That's, that's a problem to have, because we don't have a majority over here, so basically the resolution goes down.
Unless there's another motion, it becomes longer.
If you want, you want to change your vote, then that, that revolution at least comes along with it.
Mr. Chairman?
Lloyd?
Has the motion died then, is that how I understand?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the resolution as written to take effect July one.
There's a second? Well, guys. I would entertain if we, if I would entertain a motion that this be approved. They can, they can call us and we can do, we can. They can, they can call us and we can do, we can look in the exemption, we can look at it. But, you know, I think there needs to be a fire ban.
Yeah, but Chairman, I don't, I don't agree with that question about that. I think that part of that is a problem. Absolutely.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
If I could add, you know, as being a past fireman, I can tell you around the 4th of July, and I think Jerry can attest to this, and I know Tony can, but I, a lot of firemen like to sneak off and go to the hills as well. So, not only is the, the danger extremely higher during the 4th of July and before, and with the conditions, it's extremely bad, but, you know, departments are going to be short-staffed as well or possibly. And then as currently, I am of a reserve still, that you depend on reserves to come in. So, I just think the danger is, is too great this year. We all know the moisture content is way down from years past. And I don't expect to, you know, run around making a bunch of fines and I don't want that. But if we can just slow down a few of, a little bit of it, it might mean the difference, you know? I'm not, and CJ, for, I see you're on here with the paper and anyone else listening, you know, this is definitely a lot used for a moneymaker for the county to impose any fines. And I really don't want to do any, impose any fines. But if we can, if we can stop one or two fires, it could mean the difference. And unfortunately, this is a, an extreme year. And I know out, coming out of COVID, nobody wants any more damn restrictions, but I think this is needed.
Tony? Am I loud?
Yeah, you can.
I believe that the fire ban is important also. But I also believe that there's exceptions to the rules. I believe that Joe had a great idea by enforcing it on July 5th. You know, we're all sitting here, we're trying to work together on this. You know, there's people, you know, I, I don't want to see the county burn down. I don't want to see firehouses burn down or one life lost. I don't want to see it. I mean, I spent many, many, many years fighting that fire and going after it. And I, I loved it. And I, I, I don't want to see it, but, you know, like I, I came up and I asked for an exemption, but we're not getting any, you know? Come up and check my place or my son's place. Tony will vouch for this. It'd be hard to cut, get that place on fire right now. Very, very hard. I mean, this, I mean, we cut everything down. You know, all the haystacks were moved, everything was done. We take precautions. So, I, I think that the best way, I believe there should be a fire ban. I believe that Joe had the great idea by enforcing it on the 5th. And I'll, you know, I'll tell you right now, if the wind is blowing 30, 40 miles an hour or 10 miles or 20 miles an hour, I'm not gonna light a firework. There are responsible people out there. Unfortunately, the people that are unresponsible affect the people that are responsible. And it's hard for, and Jared's going, that goddamn Tony thinks he's responsible. I can see the hair right.
Well, I will, I will, I'll say something that, you know, you, you kind of, Jared, my thoughts a little bit, Tony is, is, I don't think this is gonna stop the irresponsible people. And they're getting on it anyway.
Yep.
You don't stop the people from speaking. This is.
Do you want to bring your motion again? Do you want to bring your motion again?
Is that legal to do?
We can do anything we want. Sort of. To a certain degree.
Well, do you want to quote that?
That would do a certain degree.
I'll go ahead and make the same motion again.
And I will second it again.
Okay. Movement seconded to implement the fire ban as written beginning of July 5th. Okay. Any further discussion? Ours in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I would, I would vote in favor to have a fire ban of some sort as opposed to none at all. I will say that I believe the way the resolution is written, we can make an ex, as a board to anyone's request. I would severely request that we did so in, you know, with the, on the advice of our fire warden and/or local fire department, wherever it may, the exception may take place. But, so I guess with that, I would vote a yes to some, a fire ban on the 5th as opposed to none at all, if this is gonna die.
Yeah, well, we got one on the 5th. So, pass. Start on it. But we can, we can, I looked at, we can grant exemptions. So I'm going to make an exemption that Tony can't have his fireworks.
Oh, it's being recorded.
I didn't say it.
Well, you said worse to me.
I was dropped at that time.
Very good.
That's one of the things I was thinking about, if we hadn't done it tomorrow or first. And if these two gentlemen said they'd be willing to go out and grant exemptions, then I was gonna recommend you put wording in the resolution, give it some authority, but you said you just don't have the time and the staff to do it.
Yeah, we could still grant exemptions. Even after the 5th, we can grant exemption. Because that's, you know, the agriculture burns are having to be in conjunction with, with the fire department. The way, the way this is written.
All right, just a question. So we wait for Jerry to say when the fire ban is over?
Well, I, I screwed up. I meant to, I meant to plug a, a date in there just so we didn't have to come back and do it. But since I didn't, you will need to come in front of us and have us.
Allow that.
When the conditions allow to lift a fire ban.
And given the future paths from the weather services?
I don't look for it anytime soon. I'm looking at cooking on propane from now through out the season until the first snow.
They're predicting higher than normal temperatures and less humidity, moisture.
Colleen?
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, that's resolution 2021-38.
Grade eight?
Three eight.
Okay. Yes, that's right. We probably better make a correction on those. I want to say that one, Jerry would be happy.
Yeah, I know you need to get a copy before you have any to.
Okay.
Thank you. Move for adjourned?
May I?
Uh, yeah, well, first we're gonna adjourn. Ours in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Ours, Jerry.
I just want to say thank you. I think it's gonna be tough to fleece that and get that out in the public prior to the 5th. And I, and I understand wildfires, because a few years ago, Joe and I just about got burned out. So, I understand that totally. But I appreciate it. I think that the county, the community is gonna be better off.
Tell your neighbors to all be smart, right?
Yeah. I mean, we need the fire ban.
Common sense, that's what it's all about.
Yeah, absolutely. Mine will stay in the garage.
All right. Your life, appreciate you coming.
Yeah. You know, a couple, couple years ago, I was already told, you know, you go in there and you take away the garage.
And HR, who's on the fire department, he came out with a list of fireworks. Fire, the fire department. Well, what they're moving, how they're moving, do you, actual fire department, you have a fire where it's.
So this airwolf, JR, okay, they started.
We, we usually do our own, that's all. Usually do that. So you just spend money. But it's every year, they go out to the bad one.
Special meeting?
This was a special.
She's getting it right now, Jerry. Oh, thanks, Sam. It's not a gender reveal fireworks. Say, they already got a good. We did a poll on the, on the radio station. The water fire, everyone said the fire. Yeah, okay.
Well, I can't tell you, but there.
Sorry, Tony.
I don't think we would do that.
Anyway, if I don't go for the half fun, if nobody died or a house runs up, I, I deal with my conscience. Like, yeah, it's every year.
Yeah, yeah, you worry about it. It's, we're gonna do it. And I think that's your, that is, that's gonna happen. This is.
Right at the normal condition.
Listening to the fire, we're, I live right next to a pile.
It goes off every day.
And so you guys race that house to these people. So, you know, put the fire out now.
We're gonna.
Thank you.
Cheap grass, we want to stop fire.
Oh, God.
Cheap grass.
That's one of the number one, that's one of the number one detriments to our deer herd right now.
Cheap grass.
Cheap grass. And you probably know about it, but like in, in Nevada, they figure they lost 80% of their winter ground.
It's all covered with cheap grass. You can.
What's that look like?
Cheap grass?
Yeah, what's cheap grass like?
Well, it's early green in the spring and then right now it's red. So everything, when you see that, it's, yeah, red out there, that's cheap grass.
Did you talk about?
Cows and horses, we do wildlife.
We can't, all right.
When it comes up, it starts to get green, we can't, all right.